And that's part of what the discussion was last year when we went through the budget cycle of why we needed to fund some of the park maintenance. And that goes hand in hand with that, and that's how we got to these figures. And that's part of what the discussion was last year when we went through the budget cycle
So is there a place in this document that uh that breaks down, you know, those maintenance costs?
of why we needed to fund some of the park maintenance. And that goes hand in hand with that, and that's how we got to these figures.
See, these are combined here and so I I by looking. So is there a place in this document that uh that breaks down, you know, those maintenance costs? Yeah, this is capital. I understand. So so are you saying that the capital that that applies to capital as well? See, these are combined here. And so I I by looking. Because these seem to be uh well, the capital facility plan is including then what you're saying is maintenance budget as well. Yeah, this is capital. I understand. So so are you saying that the capital that that applies to capital as well? No? Yes, I'm trying to figure out. Because these seem to be uh well, the capital facility plan is including then what you're saying is maintenance budget as well.
So John.
Here here's my root question, just to make sure I'm clear. I I would like to know uh what this plan will cost our residents uh No? Yes, I'm trying to figure out.
So John.
Here here's my root question, just to make sure I'm clear. for whichever portions they're paying for, whether they're helping to contribute to capital development or or a combination of capital development and operations maintenance, I I would like to know uh what this plan will cost our residents uh you know, versus developer fees. for whichever portions they're paying for, whether they're helping to contribute to capital And I just wasn't able to discern that directly from the table here, but maybe that's in a different place. uh development or or a combination of capital development and operations maintenance, you know, versus developer fees.
So I would say you'd need to look back at a we just passed a capital improvement plan by resolution that adopted this that has that information.
And I just wasn't able to discern that directly from the table here, but maybe that's in a different place.
So this plan just gives you a basic summary that outlines both of these funding go towards that. So I would say you'd need to look back at a we just passed a capital improvement plan by resolution that adopted this that has that information. But park impact fees that come from developer is adding capacity. So this plan just gives you a basic summary that outlines both of these funding go towards that. When you're going in and repairing or upgrading old outdated equipment, that's general fund. But park impact fees that come from developer is adding capacity. And I can get you that information. But you the what's in that plan you previously approved by resolution at a previous council meeting When you're going in and repairing or upgrading old outdated equipment, that's general fund. for the capital improvement plan. And I can get you that information.
Yeah, well, I think uh that that may be that it was approved by council. I think I I hope that I made comments at that point that,
But you the what's in that plan you previously approved by resolution at a previous council meeting
you know, um, it's one thing to approve a plan, but there's a lot in a plan like that.
for the capital improvement plan.
Yeah, well, I think uh that that may be that it was approved by council. I think I I hope that I made comments at that point that, And um I am frankly, a little weary of you know, um, it's one thing to approve a plan, but there's a lot in a plan like that. of 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 approving um bits and pieces in advance of the final. And um I am frankly, a little weary of There's a vernacular here gotcha where it's like, of 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 approving um bits and pieces in advance of the final. you know, you already voted for this. It's already in the budget. The council approved it. And then when it comes time to the brass tacks of, hey, you know, we need to get a bond issue out or we need to spend $2 million on a facility. There's a vernacular here gotcha where it's like, you know, you already voted for this. It's already in the budget. The council approved it. And then when it comes time to the brass tacks of, You know, we're already nine tenths of the way there in our in in our process and and I, you know, I'm thinking like, well, hey, you know, we need to get a bond issue out or we need to spend $2 million on a facility. I don't want to spend $2 million on a park facility right now, and I don't really want to spend $2 million on a park You know, we're already nine tenths of the way there in our in in our process and and I, you know, I'm thinking like, well, facility next year either. So I asked myself, should I be approving a plan that includes an outlook I don't want to spend $2 million on a park facility right now, and I don't really want to spend $2 million on a park for spending $2 million on a facility, even though I'm not allocating funding today? facility next year either. So I ask myself, should I be approving a plan that includes an outlook I don't think I am, right? Is that? No, I'm not allocating funding. I'm just I'm just saying, yeah, this looks like a dandy plan. for spending $2 million on a facility, even though I'm not allocating funding today? But actually, to me, it doesn't because it's 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 the overall cost is higher than I want our citizens to bear. I don't think I am, right? Is that? No, I'm not allocating funding. I'm just I'm just saying, yeah, this looks like a dandy plan. I would I would prefer a different plan that's has a smaller cost. But actually, to me, it doesn't because it's 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 the overall cost is higher than I want our citizens to bear. And then we could always boost it in the future. So I unless there's I'm convinced and I might get convinced in the next five minutes. I would I would prefer a different plan that's has a smaller cost. I I'm I'm gonna vote no on this plan. And then we could always boost it in the future. But I want to make sure that you understand that I certainly appreciate the effort. It's very professionally done. So I unless there's I'm convinced, and I might get convinced in the next five minutes. It all is great. I just don't think we can afford it. I I'm I'm gonna vote no on this plan. Until I have a a warm fuzzy feeling that we have enough money in the bank to take care of our roads, But I want to make sure that you understand that I certainly appreciate the effort. It's very professionally done. which is this huge over cloud over our city waiting to happen. It all is great. I just don't think we can afford it. Until I have a a warm fuzzy feeling that we have enough money in the bank to take care of our roads, Uh, and I don't want to be like Spokane. I had in-laws in Spokane. I traveled there in almost every month for years. which is this huge over cloud over our city waiting to happen. Places filled with potholes. It's just miserable. I mean, the alignment specialists are are making a good living up there. Uh, and I don't want to be like Spokane. I had in-laws in Spokane. I traveled there in almost every month for years. I don't want that to happen here, and I don't see that we have the budget Places filled with potholes. It's just miserable. I mean, the the alignment specialists are are making a good living up there. to to approve a plan quite like this. So that's my comment. I'll let other people talk. Thank you. I don't want that to happen here, and I don't see that we have the budget
Thank you. Um, my only comment two, two, two for one comment is on the plan itself.
to to approve a plan quite like this. So that's my comment. I'll let other people talk. Thank you.
As we succumb to the pressures of Growth Management Act and As we succumb to the pressures of Growth Management Act and basically no one gets a quarter acre lot anymore even. basically no one gets a quarter acre lot anymore even. Um, and we're putting what? Um, and we're putting what? Is it nine per acre? Is it nine per acre? Is that what we're doing on the road? Is that what we're doing on the road?
In some zones that that's allowed, yes. In some zones that that's allowed, yes.
Yeah. So um we the the open space that many of us have enjoyed Yeah. So um we the the open space that many of us have enjoyed growing up in West Richland or living in West Richland is disappearing. So the park plan is to preserve that open space. growing up in West Richland or living in West Richland is disappearing. So the park plan is to preserve that open space. Um, the my my biggest concern, and we'll get to that next, is the maintenance issue. Um, the my my biggest concern, and we'll get to that next, is the maintenance issue. As we build more parks, we have to maintain them. Maintenance is fully a burden of the general fund. As we build more parks, we have to maintain them. Maintenance is fully a burden of the general fund. Um, some of the efforts that have gone forth to try and fund this is the effort at the the Raceway. Um, some of the efforts that have gone forth to try and fund this is the effort at the the raceway. Um, as as giving us a a a small contribution to Um, as as giving us a a a small contribution to dedicated to park uh maintenance, or at least quasi dedicated dedicated to park uh maintenance, or at least quasi dedicated could be considered indicated to park maintenance. could be considered indicated to park maintenance. Um, the capital projects listed in here are associated with us maintaining us, the city maintaining parks. Um, the capital projects listed in here are associated with us maintaining us, the city maintaining parks. And I've brought this up in some of the other discussions is that we really need to look hard And I've brought this up in some of the other discussions is that we really need to look hard at outsourcing park maintenance. at outsourcing park maintenance. And we wouldn't have to build a $2 million park maintenance facility if we outsourced it. And we wouldn't have to build a $2 million park maintenance facility if we outsourced it. Um, Mr. Slade talks about the prevailing wage for those workers. I looked. It wasn't that bad. Um, Mr. Slade talks about the prevailing wage for those workers. I looked. It wasn't that bad. And I'm I'm thinking that we really should look into outsourcing some of the maintenance. So thank you. And I'm I'm thinking that we really should look into outsourcing some of the maintenance. So thank you.
Well, to piggyback on your comments, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, I think this should be taken in the same vein that we pass a six-year transportation improvement plan. I mean, there's a lot of things in there, big dollars signs in that one as well, but it is just a plan. And um it helps us communicate to the citizens too what the impact is when we have this plan in place. Um, if we don't pass this plan, um, in the end, what kind of feedback can we give citizens when we haven't approved a plan to show them costs of what's going to happen? So um I I agree, it's a it's a hard pill to swallow with price tag, but it is a plan. Um, and with a plan, you start working towards accomplishing the plan. So I'm in favor of it.
Make one quick rebuttal. It seems like I'm a lone guy out here, but that's fine. I'm used to that. Um, I uh I understand the idea that's planned. And I've in my comments, I understand that we're not allocating funds today, but but I'll just uh very briefly reiterate that there are components to this plan, like a $2 million facility and uh drinking fountains installed and things and things that are of significant cost that I just don't agree with, and that's why I'm gonna vote against it, not because I don't think we should not have a plan. I I just think that if I'm gonna vote, if I'm gonna put my name on a plan, uh, if it were just a few things here and there, but it's not. It's like 10 to 30% of this plan is things that I don't think we should be planning for. And that's my reason for not voting for this. It's not because I don't understand the process. I want to make that clear. Um, so if it were up to me, I would send this back with additional comments and we would vote on it again, and it would, you know, it might be a $6 million overall cost with with uh lesser things being planned for. You know, it might be a $6 million overall cost with with uh, lesser things being planned for. Um, but I'll just leave it at that, but thank you for the time. Thanks.
Aye.
Nay.
Thank her. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Brink. So um. Similarity to the park plan, and as I stated before, the community development department will um, in concert with the public works department. As we are going through the parks plan, realize that as we develop parks, there is a significant cost to them, and we wanted to really nail down what that is. And so we reached out to some firms. Um, council uh, approved a contract with the mayor, allow the mayor to sign a contract with site works to perform a detailed audit and review. Of our current parks. To show where we have gaps and to show actual cost to operate and maintain the park systems. This information was used to establish a basic level of service for parks and maintenance and operation. Um, that can be found in resolution 4122 that was adopted also on September 20th of 2022. And I just want to say here is that um. As we went through that, and and this informed that decision that council made is that there was, basic is the lowest. Level of service that we have. We have basic, standard and premium. And so because of the actual cost to maintain these parks, council is um. Setting the standard at basic right now. Um, unfortunately, because of some budget constraints. Council's not able to fully fund that level of service at this time. Um, and that was some of the considerations that were taken during the budget cycle. Um, but. The standard, the the basic is the level of service that was adopted under that resolution. Um, the proposed park operation and maintenance plan went through the Parks Board and the Council Park Subcommittee. Uh, they had multiple opportunities similar to the parks plan to comment and provide input on it. Um, and then on March 20th, the Park Board voted to recommend council to approve the proposed plan. Similarly, the Park Subcommittee. Met three times and discussed the O and M plan as well and voted unanimously to recommend do pass to council. Um, again, this is a very detailed plan. As you saw, it's a few hundred pages long. It also includes the ADA transition plan as an appendix. That's previously been adopted. And a lot of the things that identifies, you know, we we grab and put them in that six-year. Uh, improvement project list that you saw in the park plan. Because there's over $3 million worth of deferred maintenance that exists out there of things that need to be done to our parks that just haven't been able to be funded and taken care of. Fortunately, council did take some uh, hard measures this last budget cycle, made some other cuts elsewhere so that there could be some funding allocated towards that deferred maintenance. But there's still a long way to go. Um, as you read this. Document, it really goes through and provides all of the details as far as what's needed and why it's needed. So it's a great document. Staff um. In concert with the consultant, put a lot of effort into it, um, went out to all the different parks and did some, a lot of. Uh, boots on the ground to do some analysis. And staff supports the part board and the council subcommittee in recommending council to adopt the proposed park operation and maintenance plan as proposed.
No, I do not.
Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing.
I move to pass resolution 30 dash 23 and adopt the park operation and maintenance plan.
Second.
Do you have?
Thank you. Um, I would like to thank the member of the community that came up and spoke about the water issues, and I think that for me, that's something that I. Whenever we're in parks or even on the council, when we're discussing any land improvements, parks, whatever, I'm always making certain that we discuss. Using native plants that are especially low water requirement whenever we're doing anything. Um, I know that there's a lot of need for. Grass fields, but they take so much water. I think it's really important to look at our native plants and other plants that don't take as much water. So. When we're looking at this, I would like to reiterate that every time it comes to council or the parks subcommittee, we do talk about that, but thank you very much for the comment on that. Yes.
Uh, I want to comment on the water. Mr. Slade. Most of the water for the parks like bombing range park and and flat top park and the new park out on Red Mountain. Um, those are all irrigation water. Is that not correct?
Yeah, the sports complex has Columbia Irrigation District irrigation water. Flat Top is serviced by Columbia Irrigation District. Uh, and the new one at the Heights of Red Mountain is is provided irrigation water from the Lewis and Clark Irrigation District.
Right. I mean, a couple of our parks may be city water. Is that correct?
We still have several that are on city water, some of the older parks, and uh, as I think she was commenting about the. Storm drainage facility that's coming up the hill on Bomb Range has uh, park-like amenities above the storm drains, and that's on city water also there.
All right, thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you. Um. So on, I think it was page 22. It's hard to to flip through these pages on the tablets, but there was a. Basic standard and like premium levels of maintenance hours per year per park, I think. And I'm curious to know if we. Uh, if we know what the comparison is between what we're spending now on those parks. Versus say the basic level of service or is there a, do we know the numbers that we spend right now? On hours per park? Um, sorry, I think it's page 20. Is it in there? Okay, I must have missed it. Sorry, but if it is, I mean, do you know?
I didn't catch that. I'm sorry. Uh, I I do know the consultant recommended seven staff to to maintain your existing parks and council funded one. So uh.
What do we use now, though? We have one. Or wait, what what what's the, what's the number of staff that you would say that are, that end up spending time on operations and maintenance of our parks today? Uh, roughly, no.
I I I wish you would have gave me this question beforehand. So I I think we have four. Four full-time, and then we could have upwards of 10 seasonals, and then we do do uh, offender work crews go out and assist. On on the park maintenance.
Yeah, and that's.
But the dollar amount's nowhere near the basic level that was adopted last year and and.
Right. So I guess my other uh, question on the, on these, and by the way, again. This is really a great thorough assessment of our parks, guys. I mean. Seriously, you've got identified maintenance concerns and bulletized list for each park and accessibility needs. Um. You know, as a council member, I I just, I'm obviously. Uh, as we all are. Uh, mandated to watch our costs. Um, so in that regard. How would we prioritize? These, is that in here as well? Like, so for accessibility needs as an example, it doesn't matter which park, they all have different accessibility needs. Would, when, when it comes in the course of the five years, would we uh. Basically allocate funds based on our available grants or something? I'm curious now with. How we're gonna decide which comes first, second or third? Like, do we spend the money on maintenance? Do we spend the money on? On on accessibility, et cetera? All right, I mean, is that in here?
It's it's in your budget, but uh, um, yeah, so you have an.
500-page budget, yeah.
Yeah, you've had a, you've had an ADA transition plan that identified ADA issues in the park for probably a decade. And I'd say that council's allocated uh, limited funds towards that. We've taken opportunities. Uh, when we were doing deferred maintenance, is there a way to correct the ADA issue? So that's kind of factored into those. Uh, items, but again, I think Eric talked about it. You have over $3 million in deferred maintenance, and what was presented at the budget was to spread that out over. Five, six years. I think the ask was 600,000, and council allocated in this two-year cycle 200,000 to see what we can do. Uh, with that, basically, show us you can spend the public's money wisely before it, and then look at the next budget cycle. So. Um, I was talking to Mayor Pro Tim Brink about this earlier. What you're gonna see is probably, I don't know if it's this year or first, right after the first of the year. I've asked our park supervisor to keep track of those things and make a presentation to council so you can actually see what you're getting for your $100,000 a year. Towards ADA and deferred maintenance. Um, your other question.
Just the, yeah, just the prioritization. And there's no real set process for that, right? It's kind of a case by case.
High, low and medium. So we try to focus on the high ones that are safety issues. Um, I think we saw that when we went through the survey of the facilities. There was some, um, I think they labeled it one critical. That was actually taken care of the same day of the survey was completed, when it was identified. Um, so yeah, it gives you a list, and we try to pick off the high ones first. And then start working down the low priorities based on 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 budget, and that's done at it at my level with my supervisor in the in the parks.
Right, right. Yeah, well, I really like the detail. Um, and although I have previously stated, I'm not thrilled with the overall. Uh, $13 million over six-year cost. Um, I I I want to support. This list of, you know, maintenance and accessibility needs and the safety needs, like you said, and I understand like the last. Five minutes ago, and we voted on the, on the plan, that this isn't an allocation of funds. This is just an um, a yay verily that this is a good um, list of things that need to be done. So I just wanted to explain that. Because it might seem like there's a dichotomy in my thinking here, but there's not.
It is a plan. It's a plan that staff will follow, Councilman Smart, so you will see those asks in the future budget requests. But I think the most important thing is now that we have the tools as a city, not just staff, but council. So when a new park comes before you and goes to the thing, we're not just looking at all the pretty amenities or all the trees or all the open grass. They're also gonna come forward. What's the maintenance cost of that? So. Uh, we have a new development coming forward. Eric's working with the developer on developing that park. It's a five-acre park. It's in our park plan. The developer's putting it in as, in lieu of park impact fees. But we're also asking, what's the maintenance cost? And so that will be factored in when it goes through the park board and ultimately comes to council. So you'll see what. Uh. When we're doing something new, you're gonna see what the cost is to maintain it and be asked to fund that. So if it's a splash park. We're not, you know, it's great. We can go get grants to go build the $2 million splash park. But you're gonna, we're gonna figure out where the $80,000 you're here to maintain, it's gonna come before we go build it. So that's what's changed with this plan. We now have the tools. Before us to to look at those things, John. So the plan gives it, lays it out, but we still will have to refer back to it as we move through, forward through budget cycles.
Right, and I I I agree with that, and I appreciate the need for this type of a plan, even for our current parks. Uh, and so that's, that's appreciated, and and I do also appreciate our opportunity to regulate. The amount of money that goes into that uh, as each year goes by. So, thank you for that time.
Thank you, sir. Uh, so. After the final draft of the park plan was ready, staff performed a review. As I stated earlier, of the adopted level of service standard for new development, we use the estimates from Lewis and Clark Ranch Master Plan Development. That they've been working on to show what costs of the different types of parks would be. Um. To develop what is proposed for the park impact fee. Due to the significant increase uh, of the park impact fee, the the city. Staff is recommending to uh, increase the fee gradually over the next several years. Uh, every six months, add the additional amount, so it's kind of a tiered process. Uh, that allow for developers to not have to bite that chunk off all at once. Uh, but we'll be able to um, do that over a period of time. Um, and then at the end of it, once it reaches the the actual impact fee amount that's proposed, then every year. It would be increased by the CPI index so that it keeps up with inflation. Um. With regards to the park use or reservation fees, uh, staff is finding that we're spending significant amount of time. Uh, scheduling these park reservations for a lot of users that are outside of the city. And so we um. Aren't covering our time. We feel like it's important to do that. It's responsible for us to do that. So we put together a a proposal to increase those fees. I took that to the Parks Board. They said sound, looks good. Um, I brought it to the Park Subcommittee. They said, uh, it looks okay, but you should add a dollar to each line item. Um, so we did, uh, because they still thought it was not enough to cover our costs, which I would agree with. So they um, what's before you this evening is what the Park Subcommittee is proposing, which is that additional dollar amount. Uh, for that park reservation fee for users of our park to reserve our parks and use them for soccer or baseball or whatever they might use it for. Oh, and it has a do pass recommendation from the Subcommittee and the Board.
I move to pass resolution 30 dash 23 and adopt the amended master fee schedule.
Second. Thank you. Uh, just quick.
question on usage fees. I sat on the Grille Board of Directors. I was actually treasurer when the fee when we started having to make reservations to use the fields. I know Grille was raise the funds to build the complex. Have those credits been used up by Richland, Greater Richland literally?
Every year they come in and do a new project and it more than covers their costs. So.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for.
Thank you. First, I would like to say thank you to staff for the elegant decision to or the elegant option to give for gradually increasing the rate because I know that some developers would be very upset to suddenly find out that they have extraordinarily more to pay than the people the previous year. So thank you for that recommendation. Also, I, it it's not in here, but I think it would be interesting for folks if they're looking at how much we are asking for park reservations in this comparing to other cities. If I remember correctly, we still are not asking for it as much or even more than most, if not all of the other cities around us. Is that correct?
Or the cheapest gig in town.
Right. So I would just like to say that if you think these are bad, try getting a park in one of the other cities nearby. And this is just for non-residents. We're talking about bumping this up.
Aye.
Aye.
My show tonight, apparently. So the city of West Richland received a request by the Senior Center Board to rename the West Richardson Senior Center to the Bill Shane Senior Center. Bill Shane was an integral part to the senior center with much of the West Rich and much of the West Richland community. Bill Shane passed away on December twentieth, 2022. Bill Shane served as the president of the senior center, volunteered for the West Richland Chamber of Commerce, volunteered for the Benton County Fire District Four and served as a commissioner in the late 1970s. Bill was a huge part of the community and provided many selfless hours serving the community and the senior center. The Park Board and city staff has reviewed the rec reviewed the request and recommend city council to approve the proposed rename.
I move to approve resolution three, two, dash, two, three, renaming the West Richland Senior Center to the Bill Shane Senior Center.
Second. Motion in a second, council.
Thank you.
Don't forget public comment.
I just want to say thank you to the staff being involved with this and to let council know that every, every entity we went to to talk about renaming the senior center unanimously voted in favor of it. Bill was an icon in this city and not only with the fire district, with the police department, with the city, with Rosco, with the West Richardson Chamber, just countless hours he put in and dedicated to this city. And I think it would be a huge honor to for him, for the family. And I encourage everybody to vote for this. Thank you.
May I have a motion? Please, all in favor, say aye.
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 Ninety-one, section six. I'm trying not to focus on the past. I want to go forward, but the past is haunting us. And it's to deal with ordinance ten twenty that was filed this year. It's on the land patents. I spent the last five years since you guys brought me to a meeting in 2019. My life's been like this. We have a problem with the plat of section six of Willamette Heights. After Congress, I'm just going to read this, you guys. After Congress established a small tract act of nineteen thirty-eight and a small tract classification order number five was published in the Federal Register in nineteen fifty-four, a plat of Willamette Heights continued a dedication that stated the United States is owner of the land. Two, a subdivision shall hereafter be known as designated by the name Willamette Heights. And three, a strip thirty-foot wide on each side of each lot shall be available to public utilities was filed at the request of Willamette Heights Association, who did not own the public lands. Public lands are owned by the United States government administered to the Secretary of the Interior and managed by the Bureau of Land Management. And I live right next to about forty acres of them. So I understand. In addition, according to the RCW fifty-eight seventeen oh twenty, the intent to dedicate shall be evidenced by the owner, which was the United States of America, by the presentment for filing of the final plat or a short plat showing the dedication thereon. Almost two weeks later, the first land patent was issued. Consequently, section six and section eight properties may contain conflicting property descriptions. Having just been through the Board of Equalization do loop. This is a real problem. It's on our official tax notices. I went together, I've put packets together on section eight and section six using the Assessor website. The amount of non-recorded utilities and roads is phenomenal. Section eight doesn't even have a section six plat of Willamette Heights. There is nothing. It's called Willamette Meridian. So we're using Willamette Heights out of a plat. We're using Willamette Meridian, which is on the official. The Willamette Meridian, Washington, with the T nine R, Range twenty-eight east, section six, lot ninety-one has it. Right after it says the area described contains two and a half acres according to the official plat of the survey of the said land on file in the Bureau of Land Management. That's what my patent says. That's my deed to my property. Now, any future warranty deeds contain either the land patent or they will contain. Well, I like this one. They contain both of them. They contain the Willamette Meridian. And they also contain lot ninety-one plaits of section six of Willamette Heights, according to the plat there recorded in volume five of Plats, page fifty-two, records of Benton County. I have two plaits, two locations, one deed and a real mess. Now, the plat of Willamette Heights is thirty feet.
Mayor Pro Tim Brink, it has been three minutes.
Thank you.
No, I do not.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Good evening, council. Tonight I was going to speak on behalf of the SRO contract with the Richland School District. So I'll go ahead and speak after the fact. You've obviously already approved it. So thank you. As many of you already know, the Police Department has provided a school resource office to the school district within our jurisdiction for a number of years. Unfortunately, due to staffing issues, we were not able to fill that position when Officer Letourne retired in April of two thousand and twenty-one. The department worked through those issues and were able to assign Officer Jordan King to our school February of this year. Dr. Schelling Reddinger and the Richland School District Superintendent, along with Richard Krasner, the Executive Director of Operations, were very thankful that we were able to finally fill the vacant position and offered to help the city with the financial load to fund the police officer position. Under the terms of the agreement you have before you tonight, Richland School District will reimburse the city fifty percent of the SRO's wages and benefits and a hundred percent of overtime incurred of the SRO position. Additionally, Richland School District has agreed to reimburse the city fifty percent of any related training costs. It is noteworthy that the agreement will be in effect until two thousand twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-eight school year. The department's relationship with the school district has strengthened beyond my expectations. And I think I'm committed to maintain that relationship. This long-term commitment can provide stability and predictability for both parties and can be seen as a positive step toward promoting safety and well-being in the West Richardson School District. So I just wanted to just give you that tonight, even though it's already passed. And that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Mayor Pro Tim, I would just like to invite everybody to the re-grand opening of the seniors, the Bill Shane Senior Center. It's going to be June tenth, Saturday. And it, we are having a ceremony at eleven thirty. And we're hoping a lot of the different city council and mayor and Mayor Pro Tim and staff that have been involved with, had been involved with Bill Shane could attend. And then we have a lot of senior members and a lot of community members that are coming. And afterwards, we'll have a big barbecue. So it should be lots of fun and should be, he has all this, all the families coming in for this big event. So I invite you all to come. Starts at eleven thirty on June tenth. Thank you.
Speaking of plans, tomorrow I have three hours set aside to go through the solid waste plan. Which again is a plan. One of the aspects of plans is especially the solid waste plan is you cannot request funding for something that's not already in the plan. And so that's something consistent with our, our park plan. But speaking of planning, for those that have nothing better to do on Memorial Day weekend, on Sunday, the transit will be having their annual bus rodeo. And if you ever wanted to see a bunch of buses move around the lot and try and not hit cones, it's kind of neat. And and I've attended a couple of times. So it will be at the Transit Center, the Transit Lot down off of Columbia Drive, starting at about eight o'clock, runs till about noon. And you can see how how well the drivers actually do. I mean, it's amazing. They have to go through a spot where they have six inches to clear doing at least thirty miles an hour. So it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's kind of neat. They hit a barrel or two, but. So. But but they don't let me drive. Thank.